I will begin this meeting or open this meeting of the Upshur County Commission session. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance to our request that we hold in our thoughts those nine victims of the church shooting in Charleston, South Carolina.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. We have rain today. There's rain out there. It was pretty dark over there.
Here's hoping I'll figure it out.
Well, I don't think the rain we've had, I don't think that's where he'll be. But under the weather, that's a good chance. I think we have the minutes for last meeting, please.
Good morning. The county commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, June 11, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called meeting to order. There were present J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Terry Cutright Commissioner, Carrie Wallace County Administrator, Tabitha Perry Assistant County Administrator, and Jack London Clobber Sir Secretary. Meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of May 21 and the special meeting minutes of June 2. The regular meeting minutes of May 28 were approved with the following amendment. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the Micrologic Holdup slash Panic System Quote in the amount of $10,200. The original quote, which Micrologic Incorporated Representative Emile Butcher presented at the May 21 Commission meeting, was in the amount of $9,207.35. As Troy Brady advised, the revised quote provides for an upgradable system which is expandable to 20 alarms. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved request from Patty Adams, Chairman of the Upshur County Republican Executive Committee, for use of courthouse plaza with webber permitting, two tables and 12 chairs on Saturday, June 20, 2015, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for a celebration of West Virginia's 152nd birthday or a case of great use of the lobby of the courthouse annex. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the President to sign the agreement between the Division of Highways and the Upshur County Commission concerning repairs to the East Camp Gerda Bridge in Sollyville. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved request from Claus and Whispers Rescue Foundation Representatives Christie Riffle and Carrie Riffle to be included among the group of rescues currently approved to pull from the Loungage Animal Control Facility. J.C. Rafferty provided a review of correspondence from Doyle Tenny, IBEW Local by 96, Journeyman Electrician, requesting Upshur County to consider continuing to pay prevailing wages to workers on construction projects costing $500,000 or less. After discussion, J.C. Rafferty requested a motion to approve the request. With no motion for approval, the request died due to lack of emotion. J.C. Rafferty advised that future jobs will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, and when appropriate, the payment of prevailing wage will be considered as well as other options. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved request from James Farrell, Office of Emergency Management Director, for the employment of John C. Edwards as part-time Deputy Emergency Manager at the rate of $11 per hour effective June 15, 2015. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved that request from David Kaufman, Upshur County Sheriff, for the employment of Seth Cutright as full-time animal control officer at the rate of $11 per hour, increasing to $12 per hour after completion of training, effective date of employment is June 14, 2015. Now Commissioner Cutright accused himself of voting through to a point of interest as applicant as a family member. J.C. Rafferty reviewed correspondence from Angela Dries, 3M Electronic Monitoring Incorporated Representative concerning permission to use and dispose of data for law enforcement purposes. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the President to sign the agreement. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four year information items. Number one, correspondence from Ron Hooton, West Virginia Department of Transportation Representative, responding to the commission office's letter of concern regarding road conditions on WV20 in Upshur County. Two, correspondence from Terry Foo, Manager of Township Public Service District, regarding plans of the Sunny Buck Gardens Complex. Three, Upshur County Community Eco Prevention Coalition Fair Warning Article. Four, Williams, important safety information for public officials, 2015. Five, Columbia Pipeline Group invitation to informational open house event. Six, correspondence from Daniel Weekly, Vice President Corporate Affairs Dominion Resources Incorporated, Atlantic Coast Pipeline Fact Book. Seven, building permits made to 2015. Eight, CAT reports made 2015. Nine, DOB report made 2015. Ten, Upshur County E-911 Communications Network Report made 2015 as listed. Eleven, Upshur County Family Resource Network Director's Report made 2015. Twelve, Upshur County Family Resource Network Newsletter June 2015. Thirteen, Upshur County Health Department Newsletter June 2015. Fourteen, McCann House Chamber of Commerce Newsletter June 2015. Fifteen, Agenda Sandor Notice of Meetings as listed. Sixteen, meeting minutes as listed. Seventeen, meetings as listed. Eighteen, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. Sheila Adams, Chief Tax Deputy, appeared before the commission, provided a review of the delinquent tax list, and provided data concerning the status of tax collections. Ms. Adams advised that collections are currently at 97 percent. Chief Deputy Mike Kelly appeared before the commission to discuss converting 120 hours of sick leave credit to retirement service credit. The sick leave hours were accumulated while he was Deputy Sheriff during his initial time of employment from 1981 through 1989. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission entered into executive session at 10:30 a.m. Present were J.C. Rafferty, Troy Brady, Terry Cutright, Carrie Wallace, Tabitha Perry, and Mike Kelly. The commission returned to open session at 10:34 a.m. No decisions were made except an executive session. J.C. Rafferty advised that the request of Chief Deputy Kelly, discussion end or decision on the matter will be postponed until the commission staff has an opportunity to review slash research on the matter further. With no further business on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission adjourned at 11:30 a.m. Commissioner Rafferty, Carrie Wallace attended meetings with the city of McCann officials at 1:00 p.m. And Commissioners Rafferty, Cutright, and Carrie Wallace and Tabitha Perry attended a meeting with the West Virginia Attorney General Patrick Hornsley at the Office of the Upshur County Development Authority at Chief of Defense.
Are there any additions or corrections? So minutes is read. I would just note one thing. I believe in second paragraph were advised indicating that I had advised of a revised quote relative to the upgrade of the systems as expandable to 80 alarms. I believe that was the Administrator, Ms. Wallace. So it should, instead of Mr. Rafferty, it should be Administrator Wallace or what advised that. Are there any other additions or corrections? So minutes is read. If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So move, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I think someone wants to come in. Oh, that's the report of young children out there. Yes, they're not yet. Okay, we have a couple of programs or a couple of appointments. At 9 o'clock, starting 9:30, we have a couple of students from the Union Elementary who discuss potential requests for installation of stoplights at Keesling Mill intersection on Route 33. 10 o'clock, we have James Ferry, retired Office of Emergency Management Director, who's come in regarding retirement contribution compensation. 11 o'clock, we have supervisor meeting. At 2 o'clock, we have a policy board meeting, as it is the third Thursday of the month. So we'll move on to items for discussion, action, or approval pending the 9:30 appointment. Number one, we have correspondence from Cannon Watts, Road Director of State Programs of Global Science and Technology, regarding support contract renewal for FY 2016. Approval and signature of Upshur County Basic Order Agreement for Courthouse Network Support Administration Insulting effective July 1, 2015. This is for the computer system that the courthouse relies on to perform its duties. And this item number one is requesting authority for the President of the commission to execute the contract. Do I have a, I'm sorry.
There's no increase between the price last year and this year.
We pay on a monthly basis. Is there a motion to approve that signature of the President?
So move, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Michael Kellerman, Director of Government Ovations of Suddenlink, regarding Sequel Corporation, the parent of Sequel Third Communication Second LLC doing business at Suddenlink Communications, which is entering to a purchase and sale agreement with Altice SA, which means Society Anonymous, which is a foreign indication, that's same thing as a corporation. Whereas Altice will require 70 percent of the issued outstanding equity interest of Sequel. Approval and signature of the resolution of the county, a copy of Upshur permitting a change of control of the cable television franchise. So again, this authority would be requested for the President of the commission to execute a agreement that we have no interest in the agreement itself, but the company that provides cable service is under new ownership, a partial new ownership. That's just basically recognizing that change of ownership, but nothing else changes within the contract. Is there a motion to approve that signature? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Donna Matthews, requesting consideration to fill the vacancy on the Upshur County Civil Service Board for a year on expired term set to expire 12/31/2017. A motion to approve Ms. Matthews' appointment to that board.
So move.
All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Erin Harris, requesting consideration to serve as second district representative on the Upshur County Fire Board for a three-year term effective July 1, 2015. Is there a motion to approve that appointment? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Beth A. Burkhart, Director of Frey County Child Exchange and Visitation Program, regarding resignation of Tanya Lake and Lillian Lake effective immediately. Do we have a motion to approve those resignations, receive of those resignations?
So move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Number six, we have correspondence from Dirk Burnside, Deputy Director of the Office of Emergency Management, advising of his resignation effective immediately. That is a volunteer position, non-paid volunteer position, which Mr. Burnside has occupied for a number of years. However, he wishes to continue as the communications officer/races radio officer for the Office of Emergency Management. Do I have a motion to approve that resignation and continuing of service as the basically communications officer?
Can we accept the resignation?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, I'd like to thank Mr. Burnside because he is very active in providing assistance, especially the communications side of the Office of Emergency Management. So we appreciate his efforts and are glad that he's continuing on that capacity. Let's see. In discussion, the correspondence from Doyle Tenny, National Brotherhood of Work, local 596, Journeyman Electrician, and the County Commission's decision made on June 11, 2015, regarding his request to Upshur County to consider continuing to pay prevailing wage to workers on jobs, less than $1.5 million. This is a clarification vote, basically clarify the position the commission took lastly in which there was no motion made to accept Mr. Tenny's recommendation, but probably owing in due to my attempt to clarify, I made it more money than need be. So I will then ask, is there a motion to accept Mr. Tenny's request that the county pay prevailing wage on all contracts that we consider?
I've got some numbers.
Well, would you like to give us those numbers, Mr.?
Yep. Under prevailing wage, a carpenter in Upshur County would make $28.20 an hour, also with a $17.70 fringe benefit per hour, which means $45.90 an hour. A fireman would make $18.68 an hour with fringe benefit package costing the county $15.45 an hour, which is $34.13 an hour. And I just don't think that we should spend the taxpayer's money frivolously on work that costs less than $500,000 if the state says we don't have to. The per capita income according to 2013 census was $19,498 a year. That equates to about $11 an hour.
In Upshur County, you refer to?
That's in Upshur County, yep. And I can't hardly use that $11 an hour job to pay $45 an hour for work. So I make a motion that we do not pay prevailing wage on anything under $500,000.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
My concern is that I want the best job performance that we can get here in Upshur County. And I do not believe that we should pay prevailing wage if we can find a contractor here that can do the same work for less money. Because it is my intention to sit here as County Commissioner that I represent the citizens of Upshur County and try to save the tax dollars. And with that being said, I will give a second to your motion.
Okay. Is there a motion and second? Is there, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Next, we go approval adoption of Freedom of Information Act request form. Have you had a chance to review that previous, Freedom of Information, FOIA request form? Have you had a chance to review that particular form? It is a revision. Would you explain the revision of this form?
It's not a revision, it's just an original form. There has never been a formal way to request information through the Freedom of Information Act in our office or many of the offices within the courthouse. So Tabitha compiled this form in order to provide consistency across the offices and their requests for Freedom of Information.
And even we used to receive such a request. And even we do receive such a request.
Yes, yes.
This would inform the people, public file.
Yes.
Having been said and explained, is there a motion to approve the adoption of this form as the official form used by Upshur County Commission and other offices for purchases of public filing, Freedom of Information requests?
So move.
Second. Next. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have item number nine, approval of public notice of proposed consolidation precincts 18A, 18L. We requested that representative of the, and here she comes right in the perfect timing. I just indicated we requested someone from your office. We have the county clerk. President, would you like to take the podium and lower the microphone? I don't think we have a microphone. A little bit. We'll give you some books to stand on if you like. Big thick telephone books, but.
What about your microphone?
Number nine is all, I'll continue reading. Number nine is approval of public notice of proposed consolidation precincts 18A, 18L, 20A, 20L, 27A, 22L, 37A, 37L, 39A, 39L, 44A, 44L, 47A, and 47L to be advertised as a legal notice in Record Delta and Intermountain for two conservative leases per West Virginia Code 59-3-1, dash A, or not dash A, parentheses A, parentheses, parentheses 3, parentheses. And also item number 10, which is approval of public notice of proposed closure of precinct 13 and combining with precinct 14 to be advertised as legal notice in the Record Delta and Intermountain for two consecutive leases as per West Virginia Code Section 59-3-1, parentheses A, parentheses, parentheses 3, parentheses. Having read that, still able to maintain my composure, would you like to explain to the public purpose behind those requests?
Well, what we're doing is, the code changed in 2014, so we can consolidate precincts that have, that can have less than 300 in them. And now they've increased it so that in the city limits, you can have up to 3,000 in a precinct, and in the rural, Alton County, 1,500 in a precinct. So what we're doing is, in this city, we're combining precincts 13 and 14, which now have a, will have a total of 1,263, which they can have up to 3,000. And we are, and then, that's the only one we're combining here. That's precincts 13 and 14 and Academy, they're side by side basically, and we're combining that into one precinct. And the others, the others were all Alton County that we had to split under the old code because they were only allowed to have 750 in them. Now we can increase that to 1,500. So what we're doing is increasing, putting those precincts back together basically is what we're doing.
Is there anything that the voters that were working at the precincts that are going to be closed, or is there some action they need to take in terms of re-registering or doing anything in order to vote in the next election?
No, we have to notify them. So what we'll do, once these are actually approved, then we will notify them by mail and send them a new card. And basically, like I said, the ones from A, eight, wait, they have A and L that are splitting out, they'll just have a number on it, not a split.
In the same location, however.
They'll be at the same location.
Correct.
They were just in different, in different rooms sometimes, they were, these are all at the, at the schools.
And will this consolidation result in having fewer poll workers?
Fewer poll workers, yes.
So less expense to the county?
Yes, and that's the purpose of it. It is to save the taxpayers money because it's going to be less expense to the county and also because it's so hard to get poll workers.
Right.
So that's, that's our two main reasons for consolidating.
Well, thank you, Debbie. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
You're welcome, thank you.
So for items number nine and 10, is there a motion to approve the consolidation and the closure set forth in the two items there?
I'm thinking of something.
And close? Is there a second to that? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. We have the number 11, approval adoption of updated procedures to dispatch wrecker service that is set forth. That's one thing I've noticed, not had any, in my knowledge, complaints regarding wrecker service. There isn't agreement that the wrecks people sign and rotation of the, of the use of the service appears to be working well, and there does not appear to be any complaints that I've heard of.
You're correct. We are updating the wrecker services policy because according to West Virginia State Code, it has to be updated every three years. It hasn't been updated for a little longer than three years. And we also wanted to add a clause in here that addresses those who have not responded to calls within three month time period. So in the event that a wrecker service does not respond to a call within three months, they will have to reapply to be on the list, and that is simply by sending a letter to Mr. Langer, Director of Communication.
Thank you. Do have a motion to adopt and approve the adoption of the procedures for dispatching.
So move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Just a few minutes before, the Union School District pupils started to, Union School pupils are here, so we'll move down to all your information unless they're coming in right now. Maybe entering as we speak. Come on in. Come on in.
You all can come stand over here by the podium or just in front here if you'd like.
We'll hold off on the information items until we address the appointment. 9:30 appointment is Emily Joswi, I'm going to pronounce that right, did I pronounce that right? We're Emily. And we have Chloe Morn, both from Union Elementary School and their students, and they wish to discuss a petition for installation of a stoplight at the Keesling Mill Route 33 intersection. And make your presentation, please. Who's going to be the speaker, both of you?
This is, we have files, digits, and scores.
You might want to show that to the, to the camera and to, it's a petition signed by a number of the students. Many of the students said, obviously. And I believe the petition states the reason for your interest in this stoplight. Would you like to tell Emily what that is?
We are deeply concerned about the number of accidents that have occurred at the Keesling Mill intersection and the tragic deaths that have recently occurred from those accidents. This recently, a classmate of ours has lost his grandfather and his grandmother who's in the hospital.
Excuse me.
With severe injuries. Also, some accidents have occurred there and it causes difficulty for those people who are traveling or trying to get home. We believe that it is really necessary to put stoplights at that Keesling Mill intersection in an effort to save precious lives. Many lives have been lost. We are requesting that we be allowed to start a petition to get a stoplight at this very dangerous intersection. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Well, well stated, reasoning is sound, and it's obvious that many of your classmates support this project because of the signatures, and it's a worthy request. I must advise you, the County Commission has no authority, legal authority, to order installing of a light at their intersection. That is a requirement or implies basically the Department of Highways or the Department of Transportation for the state. When issues like this come up in the past where the commission does not have authority to actually implement the request, we often go on record in the form of a letter, which we send to the appropriate agency, federal, state, or local, requesting consideration for the citizens of Upshur County. So with that said, I would ask if there is a motion for the County Commission to direct our administrator to send a letter to the appropriate state agency to request consideration the reason stated by these young ladies and their classmates relative to the stoplight at the Keesling Mill intersection of Route 33 in Keesling Mill. Is there such a motion?
Carrie, is it possible we can send a copy of the petition and the letter?
We would do that.
Okay. How will we send the letter to the state?
Is there a second?
A second, then.
Well, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. When the president doesn't vote, unless I have an opinion, that means the president doesn't stay, that he supports it, that means he automatically supports it if he doesn't object to it. So all... So All Three Commission Are Supporting Your Petition. If You Provide That Petition, Do You Have Copies Of It For Yourselves? I Don't Want, That's The Original You Have There?
Yes.
Would It Be Okay For Us To Provide The Original? Or Would You Prefer To Have A Copy Made? I Know You've Made A Copy For Purposes Of Our Agenda, But Would You Want The Original To Be Enclosed With Our Letter To Presumably The Department Of Highways Or The Department Of Transportation?
Yes.
Do You Ladies Approve? Well, Then We'll Do That. And We Thank You For Attending, It's Very Important. And I Hope You And Your Classmates Understand That No Matter What The Position Is, What The Issue Is, That You Have Always The Right As Citizens To Make Your Concerns Known, No Matter Your Age And Whatnot. If You Can't Make It, People Representing You Can Make It. You're Important People. Just Because You're Young Doesn't Mean You Don't Count For It. Okay? Thank You Very Much.
And I Certainly Want To Thank You For The Presentation. Well Done. And With That Being Said, I, My Wife Was Good Friends With The Person Who Just Passed Away. Like I Said, Intersection Out There, Russell. Appreciate You Coming That. And Like J.C. Said, It Doesn't Matter Your Age. You All May. We Like To Hear Your Concern Is A Legitimate Concern, And This Commission Will Send A Letter To The Department Of Highways. With That Being Said, We Have No Authority Over The Department Of Highways, But At Least They Will Know That She Was Here. They Will Have A Copy Of Your Petition And A Letter From Us. Thank You.
Thank You Very Much. And It Says On The Petition That You Are The Two That Started The Petition. I Think You're Probably Pretty Good Friends. If The Girl's Grandfather Died, That's Important. He's Poor Your Friends. Okay?
The Boys Could Not Be Here. Logan And Nicholas, That's Who Started The Petition For, In The Class. But Their Father Was Unable To Be Here Because They Were Going To See The Grandmother Today. So And I Want To Thank The Girls For What They've Done. And The Boys Had To Tell Them They're Really Proud Of Them.
Because I Know More Than Most In Porters Of Grandparents.
It's Not Good To Grandmother To Forget The Old Dead.
Yes, Yes. They Actually Moved From All Yesterday To Health South.
Her memory's Gone By?
Yeah, She Knows People. She's Starting To Recognize People, And They Were Able To Tell Her That He Passed Away. So The Family's Still Having A Really Hard Common Struggle. But Through It All, They'll Get Through It.
They're Good People Because I Was At The Year, You All May. And When You See The Number Of People That Showed Up For A Pay Of Respect, Good Man.
I'm Not Usually One To Speak Out In Public. But My Name's Florence Tenny, And I Was The Girls' Fourth Grade Teacher This Year. And I Want Them To Know That I'm Very Proud Of Them And That I Support Them Hundred And Ten Percent Unconditionally. And When They First Started This Project, I Went Back And Started Researching A Few Things. And According To A News Report, There Have Been Like Twenty-Six Accidents In A Year's Time Out In That Area. There's A Lady That Lives Across The Intersection, And She Knows Of At Least Six Deaths. I Was Also Told That The Upshur County School Buses Do Not Cross That Intersection. And I Was Also Told That There Is A Trooper Who Does Not Cross That Intersection. And According To This Trooper, That Intersection, And I Think The Mount Lebo Intersection, He Said, Was The Two Most Dangerous Intersections In Upshur County.
Yeah, Burge Fort Is Also One.
Yeah.
Has Some Issues.
But I Think, You Know, If We Can, You Know, If It Doesn't Get Done Through The Mouths Of Babes, Then, And Their Compassion And Their Love, You Know, For Trying To Accomplish Something, Then I Don't Know How It's Going To Get Done.
Let's Start Somewhere.
And It Is A Good Story.
Thank You Very Much. Does He Enjoy The Rest Of Your Summer? And Study Hard When You Go Back? I Have A Feeling Might Have A Couple Of Attorneys Here Maybe. You'd Be Sitting Up Here. But You Have To Be An Attorney To Sit Here. Appreciate Your, You're After A Good Start. Obviously You Have Good Family And Good Teachers, Which Is Always An Important Thing In The Community. Grandparents Are Very Special. Thank You. You Want To Give That Petition To The Administrator? Please.
We Have Copies Of The Petition. We Wanted Some Copies Of It So You Think They're As Well? Send My Version Out. Thank You Very Much. And We'll Send You All A Copy Of That At The Office.
You Can Remain, We Just Have A Few Items You Have To Do Before We Have Our Next Appointment At Ten O'clock. As I Was Getting To, For Your Information Items, We Have Correspondence From Laura A. Ash, Laura L. Ash, Deputy State Auditor Regarding A Reminder Of Deadlines For Submitting Budget Revisions. Budget Revisions Are Due Only Before June Twenty Second. The Life Containment Life Area Is Past Back. We Have Correspondence From David A. Llewellyn, Land Agent For Columbia Pipeline Group LLC, Regarding Maintaining Portions Of The Right-of-Way By Moing And Land Clearing During The Summer Months On Or Near County Property. We Have A Handout, Whatever, Information Bulletin From The Upshur County Tobacco Prevention Coalition, Which Involves Health Risks Of These Cigarettes, Smokeless Tobacco, And Water Pipe. We Have Agendas And Notices Of Meetings. We Have Meetings Listed. We Have Appointments Needed Or Upcoming For Various Boards, And There Are A Number Of Those.